Locked in and I'm Algenon Cash. Welcome back. Election 2020, the never ending election. It's continuing to roll on. So we're going to talk a little about the election today, but also just real quickly, if you're a resident of North Carolina, if you didn't notice, Governor Cooper has actually placed further restrictions on event venues and mass gatherings outside of your private home. Governor was allowing mass gatherings up to 25 people. He's brought that back down to 10 people. And I will tell you, I've gotten a lot of calls and messages and questions about it. I am very concerned that we might be going in the wrong direction here. We could be moving back towards, I don't know if it's phase one. I don't know if the restrictions will be that tight, but it does feel like at least by the, the end of this month or early December, I fully anticipate you might see additional restrictions on a range of small businesses, including restaurants, gyms, bars, very similar to what we saw in the, the beginning of the year. Today, I know in New York, Governor Cuomo has already announced further restrictions on bars, restaurants, gyms, and a wide range of other small businesses. So if you look at what's happening around our country right now, and even around the world, it is increasingly feeling like we may be going in the wrong direction with COVID-19 and could be heading back into some shutdowns. And I feel so, so much compassion for all those small business owners that have been struggling this year. And especially friends of mine who own event venues and work in the wedding planning business and do all those great things. My prayers are with you because I really fully anticipate this winter is, is not going to be good for small business. So I know Pfizer has recently announced that they feel like they've got a vaccine. The vaccine won't be available for wide, wide distribution until probably about March or April at best. And so I'm continuing to tell small business owners to stay prepared and vigilant and ready for additional shutdowns that could extend all the way into spring of 2021. I wouldn't have never guessed we'd still be dealing with COVID-19. This, this far along, I, I was one of the naive people that thought maybe it would be gone after the summer and we'd get back to normal, but it seems like it's continuing to linger on. But today I wanted to invite a good friend of mine on. We're going to talk about COVID-19. We're going to talk about the elections. Jeff Phillips is a small business owner. He's a financial advisor. He's also currently the chairman of the Guilford County Board of Commissioners. And I always like to add, he's a good friend of mine. Jeff, how you doing today, man?
I'm doing well, Mr. Cash. I appreciate you having me on this evening. Thank you, sir.
You're so busy. The only way I can see you is invite you in for an interview. So you're a popular guy. How's it been going out there, man? How you been dealing with COVID-19?
Well, it's, you know, it's been a challenging year. We, we can get into that in any way, shape or form you'd like, but, you know, I, you mentioned I have the honor and the opportunity to chair the Guilford County Board of Commissioners this year. And when I, when I asked our board for support back in, in December, you know, I'd been doing this seven years deep into my second term. And I thought, you know, I've, I've pretty much seen it all. I've, I've been around the block a few times and, you know, you, you never know for sure. But, but, but I never anticipated what was to come very soon thereafter. And, and you know, for, for all of us around the world, of course, and across the country and right here and, and the local triad region and, and my county Guilford, you know, the world changed dramatically as we got into February and particularly March. And, you know, being the chair of our board puts me in a very interesting position. And, and, you know, bottom line, it was, yeah, it was, it was not only unexpected, but, but you know, daunting and a responsibility and weight that we carried as a board considered to be the Board of Public Health here in Guilford County. Of course, I chair in that board. We, we, you know, we had a lot of challenges ahead that we, you know, we continue to, we continue to face and deal with and work with on behalf of our citizens every day.
What are some of those? I mean, since we're on the subject of COVID-19, and I've, I've got many listeners that obviously reside in Guilford County. What are some of the protocols and measures that the county put in place, maybe early on? Have there been additional things they've done more recently? And even as a tag along to that, are you hearing anything out of the, the administration in Raleigh about further restrictions?
Yeah, we, of course, in, in late March, we implemented a stay at home order. It was a three week period of time. You know, there was a lot of information swirling around, frankly, a lot of fear from, you know, in terms of our capacity at the health, within the healthcare systems. A lot of projections at the time by the epidemiologists that were sort of in the, on the forefront of providing data and information to us. You know, projecting out the possibilities. And so we, we felt it prudent at the time and, and I included. And it was a very difficult, you know, process and working with the mayor of Greensboro, City of Greensboro and High Point and other key staff across the county to come to conclusion at least that we, we needed to implement a stay at home order for a period of time. Now, and I think that was again prudent at the time. Frankly, as you probably know, got a lot of pressure to extend that order as we got into mid-April timeframe, but we did, we, we chose not to do so. So there's, you know, there's a lot to that story that we, we certainly wouldn't have time to cover here. But I felt that based on what I could see with other local leadership and their intentions, had we not stepped in at the county level and really sort of steer that in a manner that we felt most, you know, most careful and thoughtful. That we, we could have been, you know, this is my thinking very much deep into April and May with more restrictive orders. But again, we, we chose not to do so at the time. Going back to your earlier, you know, open, some of your opening comments. You know, we then more recently, in fact, because, you know, we all knew that as fall and the cooler weather was coming, that we'd begin to see some, you know, for two reasons. One, because folks go inside more. You know, when the weather cools off. And, and secondly, the, the testing, the level of testing that's been going on statewide and certainly locally has been increasing and on the rise since, you know, since the spring. So we, we, we knew we'd see higher positivity numbers. The rates have been hanging in, you know, in the five to seven percent range, however. So, you know, a lot of the media characterizes these kind, this kind of information differently. Many times I personally don't agree with, with how, with, with how it's conveyed. And so again, we get, as a result, got some pressure more recently. You saw my post a couple of weeks ago as we were heading into the election. I had grave concern to your, some of your points earlier that administratively on the state level, particularly the governor of North Carolina, and even on the local level, we were starting to see additional pressure to, to increase the restrictions, to implement civil citations and fines for non-compliance. And of course, we have not done so in that regard, but we certainly have a lot of respect for what is going on, however, and want to continue to be vigilant in terms of how we, you know, we as citizens are responsible as best we can be on behalf of ourselves and our family and our community to, to protect ourselves and be as safe as, as we can.
What are you hearing from your, your residents in Guilford County? You know, obviously I know there's, there seems, feels like we're dealing with two crises at, at once. You know, we've got the pandemic and the viral crisis, but we've also got the economic crisis that's picking up more and more steam. So what are you hearing from your residents and your, your small business owners in Guilford County right now?
Well, you teed it up fabulously in your opening comments as well. We were very, very fortunate as a one county within the state of North Carolina that had a population in excess of 500,000 to receive care, federal cares funding in the amount of about 90, close to $94 million. So we very quickly recognizing, and one of the primary reasons we chose, I, I, and our team chose not to extend the stay at home orders back in April is we saw the incredibly detrimental impact to small business during that time. Not only were customers not able to come in, but they weren't even able to go to work and make a living and pay the bills, frankly. So we earmarked very quickly $20 million of that 94 million, established a, a small business assistance grant program for up to $10,000 per grant awarded to specifically address, you know, the, those incredibly challenging impacts that, you know, frankly, as much as we, we did in that regard, still we see businesses having closed, just not able to survive. And, you know, I share your concerns from your, again, your early comment about, you know, the governor beginning to tighten up. I predicted it. I've anticipated it. I'm concerned about it. And, and yeah, so we, we, we distributed $20 million. About 2,600 small businesses across the county received the benefits around $7,500 average. And again, with, you know, of course, much of the feedback we got incredibly positive and appreciative. And, you know, some folks saying that was the difference between us surviving, our business surviving and not. So, yeah, that, that was a huge priority, you know, from back early in the spring.
And it, you know, it, it, you know, we, we just coming off of an election. Well, I guess we're coming off of an election. We're, we're sort of, we're sort of still in the middle of the, the election. This is a week long election, could end up being a couple of months long election. You brought up, you brought up social media and I, I follow you as I follow many of my friends. I don't always comment, but I, that's how I keep up with you guys and know what's going on. And even though I hadn't seen you in a while, it almost feels like I, I know everything that's happening. You made a comment or a post on social media that President Trump and Dan Forrest was going to win in a landslide.
I didn't say, I didn't say that on social media. I told you that I thought that, that Trump was going to win by, by a pretty good margin, but thank you for bringing up the point.
We, we don't know what's going to happen with Trump yet, so we, we won't, we won't go too far down that road. What happened in North Carolina with Cooper versus Forrest?
You know, it's a, it's a great question. I don't have those numbers handy here. You, you may know them, but I was a little perplexed by the fact, you know, Mark Robinson running for, for Lieutenant Governor. And as I looked at the number of votes that he received, something like, I don't know, seemed like 250, 300,000 more than, than, than Dan Forrest.
He was actually more competitive with Cooper. Yes.
Yeah. So I was, that was puzzling to me. You may have some sort of anecdotal perspective there. But why folks would, you know, fill out that ballot, vote for, you know, Mark and not vote for Dan was, was a little concerning, absolutely, and perplexing. I can't really tell you, you know, analytically in the weeds. Haven't talked to Hal Weatherman and among others who worked closely with Dan's campaign to see what, kind of what their perspective is. But, but, but yeah, I, I'm not sure except, you know, except maybe it's, it was a, you know, we're not voting for a Republican for governor kind of perspective and anti-Trump sort of vote in that regard. You know, and maybe, maybe Mark Robinson pulled some of the African-American vote over, you know, just that, that Dan couldn't or didn't. Again, I'm not, I'm not sure. I don't know all the answers, but it's definitely an observation that is worth, is worth trying to understand better.
Yeah, I, yeah, I am a, a fan of Dan Forrest. I recall meeting him back when he ran his first race. And he was looking to get to know people here in Forsyth County. And that year he was running against Dale Falwell in a primary, who was very well known here in Forsyth County. And, you know, I think Dan's a great guy, but I, I do question the, the campaign that they just ran this year. It just felt like the campaign was a bit off message and wasn't as aggressive and coalition building. I think it was an aggressive campaign and attacking Cooper about, you know, mask and COVID-19 restrictions and et cetera. But didn't really focus on building a coalition, you know, did hardly any minority engagement, hardly any ads on Hispanic and black radio and black pick, black newspapers, Hispanic newspapers. And I think that, I think that probably hurt. I, I think the, the frequent, the, 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 the constant making fun of the mask wearing, I, I think that worked against him because, you know, his base already didn't agree with mask wearing anyway. So it wasn't something that he had to constantly bring up, but I think every time he brought it up, he just alienated more people on the left who might have potentially voted for him because they thought he wasn't taking it serious. And I, I think in the end that probably hurt. And then I just think, I just felt like Dan being a sitting lieutenant governor should have been a lot more present for the COVID-19 recovery and the press conferences and so forth. And you, you just never really seen him visible at any of these things. And so, you know, hindsight is always 2020. You can always win the game on Monday morning that you played on Sunday night and you, you can look back and talk about these things. But I, I was, I, I was always concerned that he, he was not going to win, but I was really taken aback by the deficit and the, the, the margin. I think that was really the thing that people are looking at. And for my, for my listeners out there, if you want to learn more and get some analysis on the North Carolina election, I actually interviewed John Hood, who's the president of the William, John William Pope Foundation. We had a great discussion about it last week. That full video is available on the page and you can go take a look at it. If you're just not joining us, you are locked in. I'm Algenon Cash. And the other voice you hear with me today is Jeff Phillips, who's a financial advisor and also chairman of the Guilford County Board of Commissioners. And we, we talked about the elections. You chose not to run this year. You did endorse Republican candidate Troy Lawson, who I know you, you and Troy are also personal friends. And unfortunately, he wasn't victorious in that, that, that race. What prompted you to not run? Are you, you, you thinking about higher office or what's going on?
Well, I'm asked that question often and most folks are a little bit puzzled when I, when I answer, when I tell them that I don't have plans for, to run for other office, at least at this point. But, you know, the brief answer is I tell folk, you know, most people that know me know this, but I, I have three grandchildren I did not have eight years ago when I started this gig. And I, you know, they're, they're five, four and two. And, you know, looking forward to, you know, once they get to be about eight or 10, they don't, they got, they got other interests. But, but over the next few years, you know, it was really a special time in our life, Lori and my life, my wife and I. And so we, I'm working and, and just wanting to be a more part of their lives than we have been. And, you know, anytime you do this, I mean, I'm, you mentioned I'm a financial advisor. I'm a managing partner in a firm here, firm here in, in Greensboro. And, you know, anytime you do this kind of work, I tell people it's my other, you know, part-time, full-time job. And it, it does take a lot of focus and attention. I, I think it doesn't have to. There's a lot of folks and frankly, elected officials that don't devote the kind of attention that I think they should to this kind of honor and opportunity and half of our citizens. But, but for me, it's been, you know, the, the top priority in my life and takes a lot of time and, and energy and effort. And, you know, blood, sweat and tears. And, and I'm proud to have done all that we've done over the last eight years as with Republican majority on our board. But, you know, it's, it's a good time for me to step back and sort of reevaluate. I do want to allow the census to kind of be completed, see if that in, in some way modifies the district lines. And, you know, I'll keep an eye on that and see where, you know, kind of where the Lord leads me and my family over the next few years here. But, but for now, it's family and, and business and community. And I'll remain very much involved in some things that I've helped to be a part of launching that are critically important, such as our, you know, Behavioral Health Crisis Center that'll be open, doors open in the spring of next year. I'll stay close to a homeless initiative that we very, very recently kind of embraced as a critical opportunity. It's something I think you know, I've been involved with for, for a long, long time and near and dear to my heart, among other things like the Guilford County Family Justice Center, you know, which is a, you know, a domestic violence prevention and resource and care initiative that we implemented back in 2015. It's, you know, seen, you know, about almost 50,000 people come through those doors. And I'll hand it back over to you, but one final point in that regard. You know, back in 2013, when I came on the board, we were, we had, we were number one, the state of North Carolina in domestic violence homicides. That is Guilford County had the most in the state of North Carolina. 2015, we opened these doors and we've now become, you know, thankfully, we, we, you know, we're, we're not, we basically have very few domestic violence homicides any longer. So that's a life-saving effort that, that primarily serves obviously women and, and children in our community affected by or at risk for domestic violence, elder abuse and sexual abuse and so on. So just incredible work being done there by Director Catherine Johnson and her team and, and all the agencies involved. So those are some, just a few things that I'll remain very closely involved and engaged with that I've been fortunate and blessed to be a part of.
Yeah, you, you picked an interesting time to, to leave the board. You know, in this last latest election, it seemed like Republicans really got routed. You know, it looks like the, the district, your, their district seat, District Five, as well as District Four and Six were, were lost to Democrats. I think that, you know, the, the board is a non-person board. So at this point, I think there's only two Republicans left standing on the board. What do you attribute that to? I mean, it seems like there's a shifting political landscape for the Guilford County Board of Commissioners. You talked about the fact you all had a majority. What's, what's driving that, that, that shift that we, that we see?
Wish I knew all the answers to that question, Algenon. I think some of that has to do with the kind of, you know, I hate Trump or I dislike, I dislike Trump vote. And you've got a folks voting regardless of who the candidate is, you know, for the Democrat on the ticket in that regard. I think, I think there is a shifting sentiment somewhat and, you know, urban counties and communities across the country where previously you, you, you know, you may have had opportunity to, to hold a more conservative position or more balanced position in terms of Republican, Democrat representation. I think there's some shift in sentiment. I think we've had a couple, you know, a couple few issues over here more recently, like the school bonds. You know, we, voters approved a $300 million referendum on the ballot last week related to school, Guilford County school bonds. There was, it was a, that was a very contentious issue in our county amongst some circles who wanted much, much, a much, much bigger number on the ballot than the commissioners decided upon. I think that's an element as well that could have played in. But we were looking at the facts, you know, frankly, when we came to that conclusion. Had the pandemic not blown up as it did and, and so negatively impacted our local and regional and, you know, really national economies, then we, we would have likely been a, a good bit higher in terms of the number we, we were going to land. We were sort of thinking in the seven to 800 million dollar range at the early, early in the year. And, but when, when so much changed so rapidly, you know, we felt like it would not be prudent to, to, to put that much of a burden on taxpayers in the very near future with so much uncertainty at hand. So, so I think those are just a few, you know, a few elements and issues that I think played in to the move. I think, you know, there are others and, you know, we probably don't have time to touch on, but at least from my perspective, may have impacted the results. But, but yeah, Troy gave it a good run. He is a friend of mine. He and I serve Charter School Board here in, in Greensboro. And, you know, he, hopefully I wish him well and hopefully he'll have another opportunity down the road sometime when he can be more successful.
No, I know Troy well. He's very vigilant and ran a strong campaign. I've seen, seen him a few times out there. Obviously this was a tough year to be out campaigning just because of COVID-19. But I happened to be at a, an event fundraiser with Representative John Hardester. And Troy was there and we got to catch up a little bit. So I don't think we've seen the last of him. He's also just, for those that don't know Troy Lawson, he's the first African-American Chair of the Guilford County Republican Party. Really, really sharp guy. I think we'll see him put his hat in the circle again. You mentioned earlier that Guilford County received CARES Act funding. I think you said you, you guys got about $26 million. With this election sort of, sort of lingering on and President Trump digging his heels in for a legal fight. I, you know, I posted today that I feel like we're now at zero chance of another round of federal stimulus, at least in the near term. May, may not happen here in the lame duck session, may happen in January when the new Congress is seated. But local and state governments are really under pressure right now, whether it be the state of North Carolina or Guilford County, or even the city of Greensboro. I know all, it seems like a lot of local and state governments are wanting additional stimulus so that they can take, you know, carry out whatever requirements or needs or public services they have. I mean, with this transition lingering on, does this put Guilford County in a jeopardized position as it relates to federal stimulus?
Well, I think it definitely is the, the longer, the, the longer the uncertainty, you know, lingers and absolutely detrimental in the near term, certainly, if not the long term. And in terms of the issues that we're facing and every other county, frankly, and municipality across the state of North Carolina, across the country, you know, right now, you could argue. And, and I think for us, as I mentioned earlier, we were, we were very fortunate just by virtue of the population level that we enjoy here in Guilford County at about 530 plus thousand, exceeding that barrier of half a million. It was actually 94 million that we, almost 94 million that we received. So the issue is however, that it has to be spent by December 30. That is expended. You know, it's not like earmarked or, or, you know, put aside for a future purpose. And so we've got some, you know, concerns around how are we going to afford next year and the years to follow without, you know, of course, I won't be a part of the board to decide this, but hopefully without having to raise property taxes significantly, you know, in, in the midst of, or, you know, depending on where one sees us in the timeline deep into a pandemic. So those are, those are grave concerns as far as, as far as I'm, you know, my mind thinks. And I sure hope and, and pray that this new board, which as you said earlier, will be at least six Democrats to three Republicans, if not seven to two. My colleague Commissioner Alan Branson's in a recount that starts tomorrow. He was down by 18 votes. So certainly should have requested a recount and will get it over the next couple of days. So, but he'll, he'll, you know, even if, should he win, find another few votes, he'll be in the minority going forward. So, you know, we've been for eight years, we've not raised taxes. In fact, we, we cut taxes three times, property taxes, that is, three different times during that eight-year period. And, and really just organically, any spending we did additionally, it was by virtue of our economy's growth and additional revenues that would come in as a result. So, so I'm concerned. I'm very concerned about the position that we're in, the recessionary condition that we're experiencing currently. And, 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 you know, the, the future demands on resources that are going to increase the expenditure needs and how they're going to raise that revenue, you know, what are they going to do? And, and so, but, you know, that's for, for, for me to pray about and be hopeful about, won't have a vote after December 7. So, but that's, those are, you know, very, very, very much concerns I have to your question about the pressures, the financial fiscal pressure that, that, that all local governments are enduring right now.
Jeff, how can my audience get in touch with you? We, we know you've got a financial advisory firm based in Greensboro. What's the name of it? How do they, what's the website? How do they find you?
Yeah, it's, my, my email address is jeff@midtownfa.com. That's my business email address, jeff@midtownfa, that's frankalbert.com. Midtownfinancialadvisor.com, that's our website. And you can call my direct line here at my desk, 336-790-2188. Again, that's my business number. And, and so, yeah, any, any of those options, feel free to reach out to me if you have further questions. if you have further questions or feedback or concerns. Even beyond December 7, I know a few folks at the county. So, you know, I can at least direct, you know, direct citizens with questions, who have questions or concerns and connect them, get them connected to the right place.
Jeff, thank you for locking in with me. It was great to catch up and you provided a lot of great insight that I think my, my audience will, will value despite the fact you, I'm glad I got a chance to actually interview you before you, you stepped down off the board. You've done some really great work. I, I think people will continue to see you around the community and I, I know you very well. So you'll, you'll find some ways to stay active and, you know, helping a lot of good folks out. So I appreciate you doing this. And to my audience, I also want to thank you for locking in with me today as well. It is Veterans Day, so happy Veterans Day to all those who have served this country. I always like to share that on Veterans Day, it causes me to think about my grandfather, who was a veteran. And he was also a black American. And it also makes me think about just how patriotic not only my grandfather was, but so many black veterans were in this country. To actually go serve a country and defend a country that wouldn't defend them is, is an incredible, incredible amount of patriotism. I want you to go to my page. I posted, I put up a post of an article today talking about how black veterans were basically lynched when they came back from overseas. It's a really interesting article. It's not something that you would normally learn about in traditional history books, but it is something that I, it is a message that I'm trying to spread. So go check that out. If you're not a subscriber of the YouTube channel, go subscribe to our channel. We're posting content regularly there as well. If you like what you heard today, there's a little button down there to call like. You can press like, you can also share and you can make sure you invite someone back for our next conversation. I've got a really interesting conversation coming up on Monday. I'll have a round table of small business owners, two Democrats, two Republicans, and we're going to talk about the, the election and how they feel about the outcome. So that's going to actually be on Monday at noon. So I want to encourage you to, to mark your calendar and join me there. Until then, y'all stay locked in.